We'll call the special joint budget study session together for May 18th and we'll begin with a roll call.
Councilmember Norton.
Yes.
Councilmember Harlan.
Here.
Councilmember Tran.
I'm here.
Councilmember Termini.
Here.
Mayor Botter.
Here.
I'll pledge allegiance.
Roll call, you guys. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Your shirt is worthy of Dennis Moss.
Yes, you have.
We're in a jungle up there.
It was the appropriate attire for the evening.
Why were you wearing something?
I will concede that it's the appropriate attire. Are there any additional materials?
No additional materials.
If we can only change it, dress down.
And any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Staff, there's no changes.
This is time for public comment. We'll open it up to the public. See, no one in the public. We'll close the public comment period and move on to council comments. Any council comments?
I do have a council comment. I think the city went over and beyond. Larry, I think you drove it in the meeting today on funding and stuff like that. Put on the, I don't know, what agency?
It is great. Health services.
Health services. Yeah, you had passes for everyone and it was well organized and it was good. Thanks.
That's it?
Yep.
Any treasurer comments?
No comment.
Okay. Staff comments?
I have one comment. The City of Capitola will be holding a blood drive at the community center on Friday, June 3rd from 12 to 5:00. If you want more information, you can call 800-733-2767. Thank you. June 3rd. It's a Friday and it's being provided by the Red Cross.
Thank you. With that, we will move on to the general government and it's the proposed 2016-17 fiscal year budget.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm pleased to present the draft budget for our next fiscal year. Overall, the budget picture is relatively positive this fiscal year, which reflects ongoing continued growth in our local economy. Looking ahead, which we'll spend more time on, I do see some issues, but this budget is a relatively status quo budget. Mark is here to present to you the details.
Mayor, members of council, before you, this presentation will lead to fiscal year 2016-17 proposed budget. Just as a reference, it is online if the community wants to go there and we have hard copies at the library and also City Hall. So the presentation, we'll start with just a brief overview of the current proposed budget, looking at, you know, our revenue and expenditures and where we see those going. We'll touch on the major budget changes. They're pretty minor this year. Then we'll dive into our revenue projections, expenditures. We'll look at our Measure O commitments versus the actual performance, the CIP program, and then we'll get a little section on forecasts in the future. So overall, the current proposed budget is balanced with a surplus of about $20,580. That means that our revenue are larger than our current proposed expenditures. Our major revenue sources, we're projecting to grow slightly again. Continued growth in our taxes about 3.1%. This is what we've seen coming out of the recession. It's been a slow growth, not overly optimistic but not pessimistic. We're kind of about 75% confident that we'll hit about 3.1% in our taxes. And our expenditures excluding transfers increase, with transfer, sorry, increased 2.6%. And the majority of those are in fixed personnel costs and we'll get to that in a second. So the major discretionary changes in this budget is a proposal for a public works maintenance worker. That costs about $55,000. Contracting with First Alarm to open and close the parks for the year. That's a $13,000 addition. Reducing the sidewalk cleaning. This was that one-time trial period with the BIA for the sidewalk cleaning and reduction of $15,000 is proposed. Overfilling a police officer position. It's about $10,000 to $15,000 reason. Police chief is proposing this is to ensure that on June 1st of next year, we're at full staff since it takes a while to get them trained and ready. We're also proposing implementing a financial transparency website. Make our financial picture really transparent to the community. That's $3,500. And those are the major discretionary changes. When we look at the general fund summary, just showing we're continuing our revenue growth, showing that balance. And in this presentation, we're going to touch on the taxes because that's a major portion of our revenue sources. We'll look at personnel and internal service funds. Those are the expenditures that change. We're projecting currently that the current fiscal year, so fiscal year 15-16, will end with a positive fund balance at just under $550,000. At the last year budget cycle, we have projected that at the end of 15-16, we'd be around $300,000. Our revenue has, you know, been better than projected and we've kept expenditures under control. So we're projecting a little bit larger fund balance at the end of the year. In terms of sales tax, we're projecting a 2.75% growth overall. That's composed of 3% in our Bradley Burns, so our 1% sales tax, and 2% in our district. Our district tax has been underperforming in terms of our general sales tax to 1%. We're projecting property tax growing at 4%. This is budget-to-budget numbers and that's what we've seen historically. Our TOT, we're projecting growing at about 6%. And then the bottom two, we're looking at parking revenue of increasing by 7.51%. Citations going down by 8.8%. That's due to the three-hour parking change in the village. Overall, we're projecting in those two categories a $10,000 increase.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Mark, but those are budget-to-budget projections?
Correct. Budget-to-budget.
So this is not the adjusted that we put in place, but this is citations compared to the budgeted number we had last year when we adopted the budget. And then, and as Mark explained, the decline is due to the two-to-three hour switch and we're just seeing less tickets, but increased revenue down in the village.
When you look at the makeup of our general fund revenue sources, it's very economically sensitive. So about 70% of our revenue come from items that if the economy started to have a slowdown, we could see drastic decreases. Our sales tax is 50% of our general fund revenue. TOT is almost 9% and our parking revenue is 8. So about 70% of our revenue is very economically sensitive and that's one of the reasons we highlight the reserve policy and how it was increased to be able to combat those recessions or any downturn in the economy. So in 2011-12, the combined reserves got down to about $550,000. This year, they're at 3.45 million. And we continue to hit the targets of 10% in emergency and 15% in the contingency reserve. Looking at our expenditures, as I mentioned, overall expenditures, including transfers, decreased slightly, but taking out the transfers, we went up about $600,000. The majority of that is in our personnel and internal service funds. So personnel was the largest increase with internal service funds with few, about $100,000 down there, $200,000. Also to note that the budget includes the $275,000 that was recommended by the community grant subcommittee. So our personnel increases, it's comprised of the MOU 2.6% COLA increase. It's about $130,000. We have the PERS unfunded actuarial liability increase, $127,000 this year. Due to the COLA and STEP increases, our PERS contributions, the city's PERS contributions went up $31,000. STEP increases about $60,000 this year. We're proposing that maintenance worker and our healthcare contributions went up 20, so there's the $423,000. Our internal services, we have three areas that are increasing. Our liability insurance went up the largest, it's $83,000. It's a calculation based on past claim experience as well as other factors. Workers' comp up $30,000 and we're increasing our compensated absence fund by $70,000. And that's reflective of our current cruel policies to pay out vacation. And it's also looking forward to some future retirements that may happen in the near future. So the internal services are increasing $183,000.
So this is one of the things I was going to pick up here. Back when Measure O was adopted, it's this crossover between Measure D, before Measure D expired and 2012, when we passed Measure O, we developed a financing plan, the council will recall. And so what we wanted to do was go back, now that we've gone through that five-year financing plan period, maybe that's a six-year financing plan period, and look back at that original plan of where we said the money was going to go and now report back to council on where it all went. So the primary differences you'll see in the Measure O commitment that we made at the beginning and then where we actually ended up, slightly less revenue than originally projected. As Mark mentioned, the district taxes haven't performed as well as the Bradley Burns, so we didn't end up with quite as much total revenue as we were anticipating. In addition, this year, we are proposing that additional maintenance worker. That's really due to the fact that we have two parks that are scheduled to come online this summer. In addition, the Lower Pack Cove parking lot takes a fair amount of work, so we have just sort of a higher maintenance liability than we've ever had in the past. And the public works director thinks another crew member is in order at this point. We've hit, we put less money from Measure O into reserves because we were able to allocate a significant $1.2 million from our general fund into the reserves to hit those higher reserve targets. And we got pretty much right on in terms of our CIP contribution from Measure O.
So the next portion will be our public works director looking at the capital improvement plan.
So looking at the Measure O projects and other projects that have been completed in the last fiscal year, we had 38th Avenue overlay, Stockton-Espinod intersection improvements and Rosedale Alma paving is, will be done by the time we meet again, so we put it up there. They will be starting next Wednesday while grinding out the cul-de-sacs. Other projects that weren't Measure O-related was the Capitol Avenue storm drain, the Rissman Pass Phase 1 and 2. I think Phase 2 actually started today. Part of the Rissman wall came down. And the McGregor Park is, as we all know, we're working for years, so we'll try and get that done. Moving forward to projects we have that are already funded, that we're working on to try and get done this coming up fiscal year, we have the Claire's War of Traffic Homing. We've made a decision to try and move forward with taking the part that the county would tear up and doing the rest. So basically from 42nd Avenue, or 46th Avenue to 41st, we'll do, and we'll leave the other portion. Come back and do that at a later date. Park Avenue paving, bike lanes and sidewalks. Hopefully, the paving and bike lane projects will go out to bid in here shortly. And the sidewalk project, we're continuing to work on. Monterey overlay is actually going to be going to bid with the Park Avenue paving. Park and Monterey Railroad pathway, we're still working it out with the RTC. I think we've got consensus to go ahead, so we're figuring out how to get the approvals for that project now. We do need to submit it to the railroad and get their permission or their approval on our, any work on there right away. Village Sidewalk Cooperative Project, we're looking at the next phase, which should be in front of the Trestle Building and neighboring properties there. And then enhanced bike lanes, the green bike lanes on the Highway 1 crossings. So just to review some of the bigger projects, McGregor Park, as you are aware, is well under construction finally. June 4th, we will have the skate park opening and dedication to the Monty family. Following Saturday on June 11th, we'll have a dedication to the Ozzy Dog Park. And then the bike park, the contractor who's building that is currently booked and we're hoping he can be available in the month of July, at which point we'll announce an opening for that park when that's done. We have a library project coming up. We have $2.6 million that's already available from the former RDA. And if Measure S is approved here in the next election, we'll have an additional $8 million. We will be moving forward with the design. I think the first thing we do is hire a project manager to oversee the design and take it all the way through construction for us. And it currently is scheduled for construction in 17-18. And finally, the last big project is the Rissman Park project. As you know, the total estimated cost came in significantly higher than our budgeted amount. We're working on it. One thing we've kind of recommending moving forward with is exclude the fountain from the project. Reduces the estimated cost to $777,000. And then we have a budget amount of 484, so as we move forward, we're going to need additional funds of $293,000 that'd be add to it in this fiscal, coming fiscal year. Looking at the pavement management program, this is what is designed and ready to go to bid now. We have pavement improvements on Park Avenue, Kennedy Lane and Monterey Avenue, kind of goes around the loop there around the Cliffwood Heights neighborhood. Estimate cost for that is, for sure, $1.2 million. And we have another set of streets, 42nd Diamond and Ruby Court comes in at about $655,000. So that total project, if it went out to bid as a complete package, is $1.85 million. Fortunately, that's significantly over our available funds. So at this point, we're recommending that we unfortunately defer 42nd Diamond and Ruby and move forward with the Park, Kennedy and Monterey. The new project total will be $1.195 million, meaning we'll add from this year's funding $195,000 to that project. So looking at this year's financing for the capital improvement program, we'll be adding $1.264 million, $312,000 from a final one-time payment of the triple flip withholdings, $752,000 is new revenue. And then we're recommending, we have a fund balance from the Pacific Cove lower parking lot project of about $200,000. We're recommending we put that in the CIP. That project is, you know, the project, construction project's complete. We recently settled the one lawsuit with former residents of that area. We do have outstanding claim from the contractor on the construction project, but looking forward, you know, that could be quite protracted by the time that gets settled. We, our city attorneys feel confident in our position that we won't have a large payout in that. You know, rather than sit on this money, we're recommending we move it into the capital improvement program at this point. And when it comes time to make a settlement, we'll figure out where we're going to pay for it at that time. It could be well over a year from now before we make a settlement in that case.
Two details I'd like to add on that is the settlement at this point is a tentative one with the plaintiffs from the former park and that will be on a closed session to review next week. In addition, even with this $200,000 transfer, finance tells me that there'd be an approximate balance of about $70,000 left in that fund, should there be additional payments in the contractor's claim for additional funding. So this doesn't totally exhaust that fund. It does leave a bit there to respond to their demand for payments on change orders, but at this point, we're paying interest on this fund. This fund was borrowed for capital improvements and we're recommending transferring $200,000 into this year's budget.
That amount would cover a projected sum?
Yes, so, yes, it does.
So moving forward into the next fiscal year allocations, as we just mentioned, we're recommending we add $293,000 to the Rissman Park and $195,000 to the pavement management program from this year's projects. And then the new projects, we're recommending moving forward is the Fanmar design. At this point, we're recommending we just do the design. We're continually, as two projects above show, we're giving estimates on our projects before we do design and then we come to the design and realize that we're not, not good estimators, I guess is the best way to put it, but we're having to reallocate funding as we go through. So we're recommending we get the Fanmar design, know what the estimate is and be able to move forward with allocating funding at that. We still have the Hooper Beach stairs and Espinod Park wall to deal with. Both of those are $100,000 at this point. I just got a draft report on the Hooper Beach stairs and that number looks good. I'm still waiting for the engineer's report on the Espinod Park wall. Stockton Ave bridge assessment, we've deferred this twice now, so we're putting it back in here for $50,000. That's to assess and determine ways to make sure we don't have a logjam there in the future. Let's skip down to the slurry seal. One of the problems we're running in with our pavement management program is we're rebuilding a lot of roads. We rebuilt 38th, we're rebuilding Park, Monterey, Kennedy. And it's time we probably do a pretty significant slurry seal project. We've tended to do those in the residential neighborhoods, but if you drive around, there's a lot of, a lot of streets that could use a slurry seal right now, so we're recommending $150,000 in a slurry seal. As part of that, I will be updating the pavement management program. We haven't done it for over five years now and I think it's time we update that and develop a slurry seal program. So with those projects, we'll have about $326,000 left, which could go toward the streets that we deferred earlier, the 42nd Diamond and Ruby Court, and also could go toward Fanmar as we get the final costs of those put together.
Question? Maybe Dennis and Stephanie can correct me here, but I think about 15 years ago, we did a Stockton Bridge full assessment. I just want to know what shelf that's on and why we couldn't take it down because I know the bridge hasn't changed.
Yeah, we've never done it. We had money in, when I first started here, which was about 15 years ago, it was a budgeted item. And that was for a bridge replacement that my predecessor had started. We, the council at that time looked at, you know, replacing that and said they didn't want to, they told, they defunded that project and since then, we've been trying to assess the...
Wasn't there an assessment prior to the estimate to replace?
Not that I'm aware of.
We keep calling it out.
Was that Bruce Arthur?
It was discussion, I think what happened at the time was is the council, it was determined that somehow, if you want to fix the bridge, you've got to raise it. The council came to the conclusion that nobody wanted to ever raise that bridge because getting on and off of the bridge would be difficult enough. So I think you're, I think you're right, Steve. We never did anything because the council told.
Did I miss, did clares go away? Did I miss it? Is it someplace? Is it in?
It was in the ones we're from that are continued on to this year, right there, very close.
Oh, there it is. Okay, great. Thank you. It's with Claire and Park. Thank you.
I'm not sure if that, so that... So the last slide I have is looking just at our facility funds, which is capital improvements for our buildings. We've added $230,000 in funding that's available this year and we're adding, recommending adding $110,000 to it in the 16-17 budget. And this year, we're actually planning some expenses. We've recently conducted an assessment of the community center and Jade Street area and I think the biggest we need, if anything, that goes there is repaving the parking lot at Jade Street. And then we'll also be looking at City Hall maintenance, which will be a combination of roof improvements out by the front doors here and potentially the parking lot also.
Go ahead, Dennis. Can you give me some ideas, Steve, about the beach stairs? How fast after all the planning that we've been doing?
So we, like I said, we've just got a, the first copy of the engineer's report. If we move, I plan to move forward quickly to get the engineering design done. You know, it's going to be middle of summer at the earliest that we get it reconstructed.
Be ready for summer?
It'll be middle of summer to late summer. Yeah, it will not be ready at the beginning of summer. It's about a $100,000 project, so we know we need to go out to a formal bid for that, which 30 days advertising just once we have the plans and bringing it to council. So it's maybe late summer. Yeah.
Can't do a sole source contract. It's not one of those special, very specialty items or too much money?
I don't know if it meets the emergency. I could talk to the city attorney and see if we think we could declare an emergency on it. That would be what we'd have to do to waive it. I'd be happy to look into that if the council is interested.
I think that'd be worth taking a look at, Steve.
Okay.
Just ask the question. Go ahead, Dennis.
On that same question, Steve, did we look at the...
On that same question, Steve, did we look at the possibility of removal stairs there? This is the second time I've, since I've been on the council, that we've replaced that.
So we, they're built there, and they're considered part of our coastal access in our local coastal plan. And I know Coastal Commissioners already emailed me three or four times, wondering when we're going to get them open. I think removal of them, I'd have to defer to Jamie or to the Community Development Director. It may have impacts on our local coastal plan, but...
We were checking with it, because will we continue to replace that thing every time we have El Nino here? So if we could do something as removal, just like we do with our wharf landing, and just lift it out of place for the winter time and close it down. You don't need access there in the winter. You only need it really needed in the summer. Just thought.
Okay. Let me look at it.
Or we could do something more permanent.
More extensive.
Let's put a slide in. We could do that. I think that's...
I got, I got two more things.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, are you through with your presentation?
I think that's the last slide, yes.
What about the jetty?
Jetty's an unfunded CIP project. If you'd like to make it a priority, we could at least do some engineering on it, get the plans and the permits in place, and then see if we can seek some funding.
Is that, what?
I agree.
On a 100/100, what do you rate it as? Serious? Is it?
Sea level rise, I think it's our best answer to sea level rise, to make, make sure we have the biggest beach possible. I would say it's, you know, somewhere around a seven on our priority. Yeah.
I've seen your plans. I know your parts in them.
Yeah.
Then the, is the wharf considered a facility?
The wharf is considered a facility. At this point, we're waiting for the 10-year plan to come and figure out that. We don't have an immediate project on there that we're planning on funding this year.
But we will be, if we're working, if we begin to work out, we're going to be working in these two budget years. Is that correct?
Yeah.
So is there any thought about starting, starting to, I think last year, we allocated, what, $100,000 last year?
I think there is $100,000 within the wharf fund. I'm not sure what the wharf fund budget has in it this year. I'd have to look at that and get back to it.
Is that a different place in the budget?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Okay. Thank you.
Not much.
Steve, just ballpark. What is the jetty repair? I mean, I don't see anything, any...
So the only thing we can, I mean, I know Councilman Bertrand referenced some pictures I have. It depends what we want to do. If we want to just restore it to its original elevations, which I think what we have, would just take a maintenance permit from the Coastal Commission. We're probably, I'm kind of winging it, probably talking $75,000 to $100,000 to bring in the rock and place it. If we do any improvements, add a pathway out there, you know, so there's a place for art out there, then you're probably getting close to $300,000 to $500,000, depending on what we go after.
In addition, on the beach, we also do need to be thinking about the flume.
Yeah. The flume's probably an equal need. We've got a engineering plan on that that's unfunded. It's about $90,000 to go in and do a carbon fiber paint essentially that will structurally reinforce the wharf or the flume, and then seal up all the cracks on it. It's, it's structural problems are not with the pilings, or it's being destabilized. It's the amount of cracking that's in it. So we do go in and try and fill those. Probably next week, as we're getting ready to do the closure this year, we will close some of the cracks, but there is about a $90,000 project on the flume, too.
Why don't we put a claim in with the Harbor District for repairing our jetty?
Didn't they already go through that with that? That's how the jet, original jetty got built. Yeah.
They're responsible for it. They are? Yes. They put the harbor in, the whole beach disappeared. They put the jetty in and brought the beach back. That's what, the beach was there until the harbor came.
It was all in the mouth of the harbor this winter.
Is that who with the suggestion for free parking in the village?
Yes.
Okay, good. Want to put it in the right column.
Well, we're getting the harbor to help us with the jetty. The sanitation is open.
Free?
Free.
Free, no.
So start with no, and then go to free.
So just one thing I do want council members to consider. I mean, certainly the jetty and the flume are also priorities, and probably they could be expenditures out of the facilities fund, but I think we are also bumping up against sort of just a workload issue within public works in terms of delivering all the projects that you saw on that list. So we need to be cognizant of the fact that unless we can probably farm the project out almost in its entirety, putting more things in, in this next fiscal year, may ultimately not result in more projects getting done. It may just mean that they get funded and they're done in a later fiscal year. So I want to talk a little bit about forecasting for the future and thinking about, you know, where we're going as a city and our trajectory. You know, one of the key points, I think, is that to the extent that we can think about, look, think about the future and look ahead, it helps us prepare and puts ourselves in a better position to respond when things that are unexpected, but we know are coming, happen. Economic downturns, changes at the Capitol Mall, things like that. So one of the really big ones that's coming up is that Measure D will be expiring. So that's a $1.1 million hole that that knocks in our budget. Now, that also corresponds to the final POB payment, which will be $650,000. So we're talking about a $500,000 hit to the budget that's coming in 2017. In addition, due to PERS increases, basically out till 2021, we're looking at around $150,000 to $175,000 a year increases in our payments each year to PERS. The good news is that our base PERS payments are relatively stable due to the fact that we have some people coming in these lower-cost PERS plans. But nevertheless, that payment on that UAL just is going to continue to grow for at least the next five or six years. In addition, we do have COLAs, you know, employees over time, even if it's based just on the CPI, Consumer Price Index, there will be raises. Our self-insurance liability has seen a pretty staggering increase over these last couple of years. Work comp costs always go up over time. And our healthcare costs as a city have not gone up very much in the last several years. They're only programmed in at about $20,000 a year. However, that hasn't kept pace with the costs, as council is well aware, of healthcare. And so, looking in the future, there could be additional increases in our health costs. So what that points to is basically to operate the city sort of at a status quo level, is we're looking at around a $400,000 a year annual increase, which when you look at our tax base, means somewhere around a 4% growth a year that we need to sort of keep our head up above water. In this year, which was a relatively strong economic performing year, I think we performed at 3.7%, was it? So understanding that our kind of break-even point is around a 4%, 4.2%, which is a pretty high bar to hit, as long as we're seeing all of these different sorts of external costs continuing to increase for the city. In addition, I want to talk a little bit about sort of the long-term staffing trend. And this takes us all the way back, I think, is it 15 years? 15, 16 years?
Seventeen.
Seventeen years. And you can see, you know, we hit a low point around 2012, 2013, but we're still below some of those levels that we saw back nearly, almost, almost two decades ago. And, and I think what that points to is, is that, you know, the efficiency increases you're seeing at the city, because I can tell you, when you go back and you look at agenda packets for the Planning Commission and the City Council, and you think about what sort of the expectations are in the community for information from the city, they're very different now. And there's a lot more demands on the city from the state in terms of financial reporting, in terms of stormwater compliance, in terms of environmental regulations. So, you know, we're operating a relatively lean operation here, and the city hasn't changed its staffing picture in a significant period of time. And I don't anticipate seeing really significant changes in that looking ahead. Really, what we're talking about is being able to continue sort of the services that we're offering One of the other really striking things is this is the first year that our 1% base sales tax exceeded where it was at our peak year in 2007, '08. So what we've seen is, over that almost 10-year period, is an average of 2.67 a year inflation in the Bay Area. Our 1% sales tax has basically been flat over an entire decade there. Our salary inflation hasn't grown at the same rate as the CPI. It's grown at about 1.64%. Our healthcare costs have gone up at about 4%. Our insurance costs, which is, you know, the liability work comp insurance, have gone up about 21%. And our PERS increases have gone up at about 3.3%. So all of this points to, at least as sales tax being the big revenue driver in the city, growing at essentially zero, and we're in a position now to provide the same services that we did in 2007, '08, costs us about $1.6 million more today than it did then. So I know this is just a lesson in inflation, but helping everybody understand the challenges that we face with such a heavy reliance on the sales tax revenue. Again, looking back at 2007, '08, back then, our employees weren't contributing at all to the CalPERS. Today, they're contributing at one of the highest levels, probably the highest level in the Monterey Bay region, where our safety employees are contributing almost 14% of their salary towards PERS, and the miscellaneous employees are contributing 12.3. And as I pointed out, that the healthcare insurance premiums have risen faster than the city's contribution. Employees' share of that cost has increased over time as So this is, this is looking out into the future, and that dark line in the middle represents where we are today with a balanced budget. And in the, what you see in the future is that the dashed red line is our expenditures, and the blue line is showing our projected revenues. And this is with our budget, with sort of status quo, without allocating anything for the CIP. So basically, everything below the blue line is available for CIP. And the challenge we run into is, is that if things grow the way, change the way we think, by around 2019, really, there's very little excess revenue available for CIP and to take care of our facilities, our infrastructure. So looking at this chart another way, showing it here, putting in $400,000 a year in street maintenance, we end up basically having our expenditures exceed revenues. Was it 2019 was the first year that that happens? So that's the challenge that we're faced with right now. So I think all of these things, I was just going to kind of slow back down and take a, you know, big picture look at this, with how we're going to deal with this capital project, improvement projects when Measure D expires. What will happen at the next economic slowdown? You know, I think we all know that last time we had an economic slowdown, our sales tax fell double digits year over year for several years in a row. It'll happen at some point. Hopefully nowhere near at that level, but we will be faced with an economic downturn where we will see either flat or potentially negative sales tax growth. There's also changes in tax policy at a statewide level that are possibility that I'm tracking and concern me that could have a negative impact on the city. They're beyond our control, obviously, and I made the league well aware of our position on that issue, but that is something that does concern me. While the new mall owners are certainly representing opportunity, imagining that they did come into the city and they did come in with a big project, we also have to understand that a big project takes time to build. We would be faced with potentially multiple years of relatively low tax off, off the property, which we would have to be able to weather. And then finally, this last point is, is how we control our costs in the long term. Many of our major drivers of cost, the PERS, unfunded liability, and our insurance costs are really outside the city's control. So some of the things that I'm suggesting at this point, as we think about the future, what we might want to do as a city is, number one is, is that we use about one full FTE in public work to take care of street sweeping. Sort of our all-in cost, if you will, to do street sweeping is almost $100,000 a year, including the advertised cost for the sweeper, plus O and M on the sweeper, plus basically a full-time person to do that. Some jurisdictions contract that out. If you contract that out, you can, there's potential savings. If you contract that out and you, you can add the street sweeping cost to the garbage bill, basically that frees up that body and can be about $100,000 a year savings to the city. So that's one of the suggestions. I'm not suggesting it in the budget this year, but I'd like council direction if this is something that the city should pursue and potentially get, get some bids and further details about how we could look into this and implement it down the road. I know the council, we've also had conversations about Measure D extension, and I think that that's a conversation well worth having, given the challenges we face in the future. Also, there are other revenue options, and I think that everybody should consider those and think about them in the future if they make sense. New TOT, I mean, the simplest thing in the world, certainly the thing that probably helped the city out of the last recession the most was the development of the Fairfield. That project alone made a significant improvement in our budget. And obviously, the challenge is we have limited space, and all of the spaces that are available tend to be controversial. So we need to find a site and a project that people can all support. And then the last option, I think, is really we just keep a close eye on our tax performances and just be willing and understand that we're going to have to adjust our service levels and make difficult budget decisions if, over time, our revenue grows at less than that 4.2%. And that's certainly an option and certainly can be done, but it does involve doing things that we're not doing things in the future that we're doing today.
So that actually ends our presentation. Before we get into some of the discussions, the Finance Advisory Committee met last night, and the City Treasurer has a recommendation from the committee.
Good evening, council. I want, I'm just coming to bring a recommendation from the Finance Advisory Committee. I think it's more of just a couple comments. But the first thing, after reviewing the budget, we really want to encourage the city to review and look at more ways to generate revenue. It's not, I wouldn't say it's the norm for a city to depend 67% on visitors or sales tax revenue and TOT and things like that that are so, can be so volatile. So that's the first thing the Finance Advisory Committee wanted to kind of make a recommendation on. But we also, as the Finance Committee, we completely support the budget with the caveat that before hiring, we really look at ways to create efficiencies around our departments and the staffing of our departments. For example, it looks like staff has already, they've already come up with some solutions such as hiring first alarm versus using, utilizing an officer to open and close the parks, keeping one more officer on the streets, and being able to contract that out as well as a sweet, street, uh, street sweepers. So that's really our only recommendation, is that each department looks at their efficiencies before they start adding more personnel. So, thank you.
Question?
Yeah, question.
If we do go to contract on street sweeper, would that potentially free up a person so that putting off hiring would be a possibility?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Bertrand, so the Public Works Director and I discussed that, and that was, you know, originally this conversation started from the standpoint of we need another body. And I said, well, what else could we do other than get another body? The answer was, well, we could contract out street sweeping. The reality is, is that we're not going to have that contract set up for street sweeping before these parks are open. The one thing we do know is that we've been experiencing some attrition in our public works crew, and our recommendation would be to increase the crew level today. If we get the direction to pursue the street sweeping contract, we will do so. And the next time we end up with a vacancy on the crew, we would just scale back by one, till we back, back at the level that we're at today.
So on the same note, I understand that, and yet the increase in FTE, the last increase we had in public works FTE is, was for an environmental project manager, which I have a lot of questions about. In '16, '17, it increases for a field supervisor, not for a parks worker, unless that was noted wrong in the budget.
I don't...
That was in planning.
I think that was a reclassification. Well, it's certainly not this year. I think the Public Works Director...
Departmental reports that the FTE increase was for a field supervisor, not for a...
So in the last, in the 15, 16 budget, one of the maintenance workers was moved to the field supervisor position. So in this budget, the maintenance worker level would be the same as 15, the 14, 15 budget?
Really, what that, if you recall, that was, we did that at mid-year. What that was about? You remember? Okay.
I do. I was just, you know, we're adding one, but we're also increasing some management as well. But I'll question that more.
Okay.
Go ahead, Josh.
Just to follow up on what you said in terms of, I heard you say we would hire someone in anticipation of someone retiring, and then that person would be let go? I mean, so that sort of doesn't strike me as good.
To make it clear, I mean, there are multiple steps that we would need to take before we could contract for street sweeping. And I think the council, we just don't have that information to present to you tonight, and I think that we would need to do more research of staff. There's, you know, potentially implications. We'd have to have conversations with the union as well. So what our suggestion at this point is hiring a full-time, permanent additional maintenance crew worker. And what I said was that we have, we have seen attrition, and we will continue to see attrition over the next several years on our crew as people get to the point where they're going to retire. And through that attrition, then we could scale back the crew if we ultimately settled on this street sweeping contract option.
Dennis?
You know, we're looking at, we're looking at Measure D and also with the TOT. To increase TOT... To increase TOT, we have no means within four to five years to do it. If we had a hotel site, it's going to be three or four years before we have something inside. So it's not something that solves immediate thing, unless we consider going back to the barrel for 11 or 12%. That is something we could do immediately and have that increase starting next year. The other one is, I don't know how we can escape going, not going back for Measure D and increase the timeline. I don't think we have a choice. I think we've got to. The other place that I've seen that we can actually speak, carrying on what Christine said, was in department efficiencies, I think that, and I deal with a lot of different jurisdictions on fee basis, and we're cheap. We need, we really need to take a harder look at our fee schedule for all our services that we provide. And that deals with planning public works, whatever is required there. And I think that we have room to grow on that and not offend the public, because certainly we're one of the cheaper jurisdictions to go through at this point. But I go back to Measure D, I don't think we have a choice. I think we need to take action this year on Measure D.
I think Councilman Dennis has brought that up a couple of times in terms of our fees, and I think we did some adjustments last year, but maybe if we do consider going after adjustments, we compare with other cities in this area, make sure that we're in line.
So the comprehensive fee update was adopted back in December. We're recommending that we'll come back here shortly, most likely in June or July, to re-update them for the next fiscal year.
And there are a couple in particular that you'll recall that I think we've discussed in the past that we are going to recommend increasing. I think, for example, the surf school fee, maybe a trifle low. In addition, I think we need to come up with an appeal fee, not just a planning permit appeal fee, but something that's maybe a little bit more reflective of kind of a general appeal fee, because getting an item in front of the city council right now for $150 is quite a bargain, if you consider all the staff time and work that goes into preparing an agenda report and a presentation and noticing and then bringing it to you.
We could actually take a lot of them, do them at cost. In other words, we go to add costs on those type of issues, then we're sure that the city's being, the staff is being paid for for its time.
No, I think that's appropriate. Mike, did you have a question?
I do. Go ahead. Back to slide number five, I think in your PowerPoint, markets, general fund summary. Why is our, why is our plan tax down half a million dollars between 1617, 1718? Is that Measure D going away?
It's a Measure D.
So the whole Measure D is 1.1. But, so really, our taxes are going down significantly, even though our expenditures will go down as well, like for the POV.
So the 1718 plan for taxes, we have half a year of Measure D since it expires in December.
Okay.
So 1718 only reflects half a year of zero Measure D.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Yeah, I just want to chime in on with Measure D. I think it's something that's staring us all in the face, and I think we originally looked at it as something that was going to save the wharf, and as we talk about other entities such as the jetty or the flume, other items that would not be street/road associated, you know, so it wouldn't be in conflict with any other measures, I think it's a great opportunity for us to build the measure around those kind of items that are going to provide for repairs of, we're talking about items that have been in need of repair for many, many years. So, I mean, I appreciate the comments of the Finance Committee to seek other sources of revenue, but the kind of revenue we need, I'm very optimistic, as the city manager said at the mall, when it comes into some master developer plan, which could be five, six, seven years down the road before we actually see revenue from that, but it kind of gives us a guideline as to what we could recommend for a term on Measure D, because ideally, I would love to see the mall replenish our need for that so we wouldn't have to rely on tax measures, but we've got some serious issues that are looking us in the face, and I'm just not sure how long, you know, how long we can not make those repairs. And the wharf is one of them, and the flume, and the jetty, et cetera. I think we could craft together a good, a good idea of what needs to be represented on that, on that request. Any other comments?
Questions?
Oh, go ahead.
What's the procedure now? Are we going to go through it page by page?
We can do it however you'd like to do it. With that, if you'd like to begin, that's next time.
Okay, I was just going to start at the beginning and go through and ask a few questions. If it gets too boring, we can move on. Some questions and comments. I'd love to see us find that $300,000 to do the Rispin Fountain. It would be really nice to do that as one project, to get all the landscaping done and have that fountain put in. So that's just something to keep in the back of our minds if we can, $300,000 is a lot of money, but that would be, that would be, that would be really nice. General Fund, that, the red, the red marker. The city manager's budget is up from $780,000 to $890,000. I'm sure there's good reasons for all of these things, and they're probably in other, on other pages, but-
Just to mention on that, so I took a look at how we are allocating our internal service funds. We have policies in place for those. I couldn't recreate prior year budgets based on what it says our policies are, so what I did was went to what the policy says and allocated based on those. So a lot of the changes in departments are based on internal services allocations. The internal services outside of three, we mentioned, the liability workers comp and compensated absences, those didn't increase, so that we didn't, we're not contributing more to internal services, it's just how we allocated the departments changed.
But in addition, there's another piece on that, is that you'll recall that the IT, we have under a contract right now, and so that was being paid out of the IT fund, right, as consulting services? We're trying to bring that back in-house, so we kept that position open, we tried to contract for it, we're thinking we're better off actually having the body here, and so that was adding that position back into the city manager's budget. So that's, those are the two big pieces that are driving that move.
Okay, page six. There's, there was a new allocation this year for stormwater for $63,000, and I think that's just, that was just moving, moving that position around, too, calling it something different.
Correct. Currently, it's in public works streets, and we're going to account for it properly and create a new division for stormwater.
Is that what we should call it? Should we call it, is that what we should call it? It's not, it doesn't have a different name?
No, I mean, on a statewide basis, it's considered a stormwater pollution program, so I think that is appropriate title.
Okay. Seven, police overtime, $218,000. I know they always really, really try to do a really good job with that, and so I just hope we can continue to keep doing a really good job with that.
Police, what is the overtime currently, what particular projects? Are you talking about our festivals or something else? Some of those grant funded? Okay.
So operationally speaking, good evening, Mayor and Councilmember. We have several divisions. The law enforcement division covers about $160,000 of that overtime, and then we also have special projects and some grant-funded overtime. A lot of the federally funded grant overtime and projects is actually going to be going away, so we are continuing to stay at the same level that we've had for the last four or five years.
City manager's departments, hazardous waste disposal fee, $25,000. That's for our corp yard that has to take stuff to somewhere to get disposed of, because if we're not paying, I hope we'll pick, to pick up our e-waste, because those programs are, I thought, free for us.
No, that, that's our, good, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, that is our contribution to countywide hazardous waste. We participate in that, we don't run the operation, we help fund it, but that's based on how much we allocate as a city, not just-
So that funds the landfill?
It hazardous waste-
At the landfill?
At the landfill, that's correct. That's, that's a piece of what, of the total cost. We don't have staff doing it, but that's, that's our share of it.
Contribution.
Yes.
And we should be sure and remind our residents to use it so that we're getting, we're getting our $25,000 worth-
Okay.
-in the newsletter or somewhere. Good. Okay, 12, page 12. There's, Streets, eucalyptus, Park Avenue, $4,000. Is that just maintenance of the eucalyptus trees? Okay. Same page, 12. Sidewalk cleaning, $6,000, esplanade sidewalk cleaning. Is that enough? Are we going to, we really want to make sure we have enough, so we have our clean sidewalks this summer. So maybe just a footnote for the council, if we don't think it's enough-
Do you want me to weigh in on that one? Why don't I take that?
Okay.
I think it's, I think I should address this, and about a year ago, I came to this council and asked for money to do a complete overhaul cleaning of the esplanade. The city was contributing $6,000, which more or less did two or three cleanings a year. And we all said that we'd like to see the esplanade cleaner, and I proposed to the BIA, said, you know, we need to develop a partnership. At the time, the cleanings, like I said, were about $3,000 each, we wanted to do about 10, which we thought would be $30,000. Steve was able to go out and get a, the guy that bid the job for it to do all the cleanings at a reduced weight rate because we were doing more cleans, and that bill, give or take, Steve gave about $15,000, and so we paid the entire bill. So I went back this year to the BIA and I said, you know, we, we've got this down from $30,000 to $15,000, we'd like you to be a partner in this. And there was actually language that says that street cleaning is part of the responsibility of the BIA, and I proposed then a two-thirds, one-third partnership. We would put in $10,000, they would put in $5,000, and they failed to put that into their budget this year, so they're not willing to contribute towards the street cleaning.
But we need to find a way to have clean streets somehow, and I, you know, I'm willing to bite the bullet and pay for it to get it done.
I agree. This is going to happen. I know you never get agreement with them to pay for it.
I agree, but it's worth noting that we took on the whole responsibility last year, and we were willing to do it, you know, the double street cleaning this year with a little bit of help from them. They refused, and I think we're still going to do this, the cleaning. So it being noted is enough for me, because I'm all in as far as cleaning the streets.
So we need to add more than $6,000?
Well, we put six, the cost is 15. If we were to bear the burden of the entire cost, we would have to add another $9,000. Is that my math right?
If that's what it takes, if it's a small price to pay in our budget for that esplanade.
We'll, we'll figure it out.
I'm not breaking up law in favor of it.
Okay.
I knew they were going to burn us in the-
Let's talk about it when we get to all policy stuff. I just want to bring up-
How about this, can we save that for a discussion item? Okay?
Yeah, yeah. Let me keep going down here.
That's fine, keep going. Thank you for bringing that up.
They said they were going to save it. I mean, sure.
We're going to, we're going to discuss it.
Okay. Six, page 16. Where is there, page 16? That must be in another section. Just a minute. General. General Fund, 16. Okay. In the, in the red section again, general fund, page 16. The IT, let's see. The IT cost is going away there in that part. And tell me what the parking reserve fund is?
The parking reserve fund, you'll recall, was part of a deal worked out when we last increased the parking meter rates down in the village, that we agreed to authorize, was it half? Help me out here, half of the increase in revenue into a parking reserve fund. We've done that, it's $100,000 a year. We also used that parking reserve fund to pay for the increased parking that we developed in Pat Cove, so it turns around and helps fund the debt.
That's what I was going to say, what does the money go for? Is it just sitting there? Or does it go-
Oh, no, it's being used to pay the debt service that we used to build the new parking.
Okay.
Is that how it's being allocated?
Yeah, 100%.
So it remains in the parking?
Can we borrow from that reserve for something else?
Well, I mean, at this point, it's 100% subscribed. I mean, you know, it's a parking reserve, it goes in there, and then that pays the debt service to build the parking lot, and there's an additional payment that we supplement. There is, there's a general fund contribution that's required as well.
Okay, and in the section up above that, IT goes from 130 to 203.
Yeah, so the IT fund in the past several budgets has, it had a balance, so some of the fund balance was being used. In this budget, that fund balance is down to about $20,000, so we're budgeting the full expenditure.
Okay.
For equipment and stuff.
Yeah.
Okay, the next section with the white label, page 7. There's, in the, on the bottom part, authorized positions, there's a 0.35 city manager position.
So the city manager's position is split between general gov, the city manager's office, and also personnel.
That's what I thought. Okay, page 12. What, do we have a section in here that we've had before of all the, of all the contract services? We have that, don't we?
Yes, councilmember, that was the list that we were looking at earlier, in the red tab.
Of all the contract services that we have? What is the, well, I'll do that, I'll ask that one later. Page 17. I was going to ask what the field supervisor, and what's the job description for the field supervisor?
It says position we reclassified last year in mid-year, it took a maintenance worker to position and made them our field supervisor, so he's actually out in the streets, running the crews in the field as our superintendent, is more in charge of managing the office up at Load Street, or Load Street, up at the corp yard. So it was recognizing one of our, the maintenance workers, too, expertise in running the crew and putting him and giving him that, instead of running a person making the same amount of money as him and gives him a supervisory, supervisory position in the crew. So we didn't add any crew at that time, we just re-classed.
That was also part of a sort of a succession planning effort on our part, making sure that we had the right person who's ready to run the crews when Eddie Ray retires. In addition, it's part of a longer-term strategy that when Eddie Ray does retire, we're going to be looking at reorganizing how we do things and probably flattening out the management structure in public works and bringing a public works manager, probably eliminating that position and bringing a public works manager, project manager on board full-time.
Is that a good title for that person?
Yes.
Field supervisor, would that be that?
Yes. And keep in mind, councilmembers, Mark and I are available if you do want to ask any questions on the budget to meet one-on-one. If you want to dig into some particular questions, we're always available to meet during the budget hearing time.
So on page 20 of that section, there's a change, the fleet section has a change in personnel from last year to this year of 104,000, 130,000. We're not adding any personnel in fleet, or is something getting charged to that department now that wasn't getting charged? I know it was higher before, but it just-
Yeah, in the fleet, we've had a, we had a long time, Charlie was our longtime contact employee, kind of supervised the, our crew at that point. Charlie is now retired and is just working on an as-needed basis, and so we promoted the, or re-classed the existing mechanic position to supervising mechanic position and give him authority and backfilled that position with a halftime position that we only fill as we need. So it was recognition of changing the mechanic to a supervising mechanic.
And keep in mind, budget to budget, we were 1298 last year, budgeted amount, we're 130 this year, so it's essentially flat budget, just the estimated actuals came in lower because we just didn't need all the full number of hours from the part-time.
On page 21, the parks personnel also goes up from 277,000 to 345.
That's the additional maintenance, public works maintenance worker.
So you're charging their, part of their time to this?
That whole $55,000 would be in, in the parks budget.
Oh, okay. Okay, 23. I'll bring that up later on. I just have to bring up internal services, if, in the next section, in the green section. If we have, ever have any chance to get rid of Lexington, I'd love to do that. If we have, ever have any chance to get rid of Lexington, I'd love to do that. It really, it really galls me that we had to sue our insurance company to settle a claim and, and we're still giving them money. So it would just be wonderful if we could not do that. So those are my, those are all my questions for now. I have lots of comments about, about different programs and things, how we might want to move money a little bit here and there. But that's all my major questions.
Michael, a couple of quick ones. Art and cultural. Personnel cost up 40% with the hours for personnel remain the same. I don't know if that's a typo or not. Significant increase in personnel costs. Maybe we're just allocating someone else's time, but you don't have to answer it. I'm just noting it. Also, museum went from a three-quarter position to a half position and yet the personnel cost remained the same. Just, just a thought.
So the museum, budget to budget, it's gonna be the same? It's the estimated, actually, I'm not saying this without looking at it, so I hope I'm not wrong. We kept that position, that three-quarters position in the authorized amount, but Frank's only been working half-time and has only wanted to work half-time.
Right.
So we, he's just agreed that halftime and we've made it halftime.
It just, it looks odd seeing .75, .75, .75, and it goes to .5 and personnel's, not that it's not a great deal, not that I don't want Frank being there, just noting things that jumped out at me. Other than that, I have nothing and I'm sure it'll be, you know, risk discussion at future meetings.
Yeah, I'm sure they will. Dennis?
No, no, I just want, I'd like some explanation on how the whole process is gonna work though for the, all the budget, all the minutes.
We are all gonna get that, yeah, absolutely. Chuck, any other questions? Any comments? Any?
I'm sort of on Dennis's.
Okay.
Oh, I just have a policy question also for everybody to think about.
Sure.
Do we need to move more money into purse contingency? And, you know, just to feel more comfortable there. And, and so if we have any money that we want to think about moving around, there's a lot of money in the regular contingency fund, maybe move a couple hundred thousand dollars over to purse contingency and we'd all feel a little better. But that's just a, something to talk about later on.
Did the finance committee have any recommendation on that area?
No, we didn't.
Okay, good. Then let's go with the next direction, which you'd like us to do.
So, so the, the real purpose behind tonight was to get the budget presented to you. And if there's items that you wanted us explicitly to look at and work on, um, between now and the next budget hearing, now's the time to call them out. We have a number of items that you guys have called out during the course of the discussion and we'll do research and, and bring back additional information on those things. The next budget hearing is scheduled for June 1st. And so at that point, that'll be, we'll be returning with additional information on any questions that we were unable to answer tonight or additional things that you'd like us to look at. And then our final budget hearing is scheduled for June 16th. Often, we don't end up needing that June 16th hearing. We're usually able to get to the point where we have agreement on an overall budget at that June 1st meeting. However, recall that, that was the date that we're gonna be receiving the poll results from Gene Bregman. So we're gonna need that June 16th date. So we will be meeting that evening and we, that'll be the opportunity to potentially adopt the budget.
I'm optimistic we can finish on the 1st.
That's not an I have a worry game, is it?
Depends on how deep the playoffs they go.
I just, just have, just have a couple of things for, to think about. I'd really like us to add another $5,000 or $6,000 for an extra newsletter this year, to have three instead of two. I really would like some, uh, just a little bit of, of money from whichever account to increase the security in our buildings. The locks are inadequate and some of the dead bolts don't work, some of the other locks don't work, and the windows, you know, and so forth. So if we could, if we could do a little bit to make our facilities, all of our facilities a little more secure, I'd like us to look at, um, the bench program, if we're gonna have a bench program at the Rispin Mansion. That's a small, small amount of money. It's not very much, but it, a little bit of revenue and people would love it. And just to look at that. And Jade Street needs, that, that parking lot's horrible and it needs a little money to do a little replacement, like when you're gonna close the, um, the curtains between the rooms. Some of those handles are broken. I don't know if they can be fixed or, the whole thing has to be replaced, but there's a few things around there that are kind of tacky. And so if we, we could do that. And I'd like us to also see if we could do some minor, other minor improvements in the wharf bathrooms, the men's wharf bathroom and the city hall bathrooms. I mean, a coat of paint, a new sink, a new toilet would, I think, go a long ways and it's not that expensive. And I don't know about the bathroom stat at, at the esplanade. Those are, those are kind of industrial and they are what they are. But if we could do that to make, and, and then to replace the bollards on Bromer and replace the bollards on Wharf Road. Those couldn't be that expensive, but something more attractive. If people are staying in that hotel for, for $350, $300 a night, that's ugly interception there with those ugly, ugly bollards. And also redo the welcome to Capitola sign on Lower 41st Avenue. It's all faded and, and just needs to be redone. And that's a little, little project too. But I'd like to see us go back to the basics and just make sure that we have, you know, some of our basic things taken care of, that community looks sharp and, and so forth. Getting ready for our big, big season now. I pulled out my notes from last year to see if there were any other things on the list that we haven't gotten to. And one of the things was sanctuary trail markers. And we do have a little money in the budget for the sanctuary trail markers. And so I'd like us to look at purchasing some small ones to get the ball rolling, to get people thinking about the sanctuary scenic trail. It's there. It's always gonna be there. RTC's not doing anything about it. So it's up to us to promote it and to, to educate people about it and to, to follow that, that original plan. Another one was, um, that was on our list from last year is to review our disaster preparedness planning for the community. So maybe we can work on that a little bit this year. And, um, and I'd love to increase the stipend for the Arkansas site committee.
Keep that list. Chuck?
So, um, someone on the council did mention about how it might be an interesting idea to do a memorial wall here. And so I did talk to someone who's in the know about the, um, the one that was taken down. And I just want to confirm that there really is a desire in this area for something that would take up that loss. I am, I do have a proposal to look at the parking permits. And I'm working with, um, parking committee. I need to talk to the new chair. I talked with the former chair and I've talked with Mark and we talked about how that would significantly actually increase revenue to the city. Also want to inquire, how do I add something to the CIP? Because I've been working with Steve about some exercise equipment for seniors. So it'd be something that would aggravate in mobility, balance, and, and strengthening its equipment that would go into parks. I was thinking about Noble Gulch Park. Steve suggested maybe out at Jay's Tree Park. And when I thought about that, it makes sense, especially if it's near the kids' playground. So that maybe the grandparents are there with the kids. So did contact a salesperson. I'm trying to get them to come out here and do a presentation. The date's not set, but that'd be the first step. I just don't know how to get it into the CIP. I don't think it's very expensive. It's, um, easily installed, very able to withstand obviously weatherization, weathering and stuff like that.
So, Councilor Tran, this is the opportunity to bring up items that you'd like to see added. I'm, I'm not sure that's a CIP item, but that may be an equipment purchase or some other point. But if you'd like to see, um, things like that, bring it up now. When we have our June 1st meeting, we'll try to hang a price tag on each one of these and you can haggle with your fellow council members and figure out what gets put into the budget.
Okay, I'll, I'll further my discussion with the salesperson so we could get a price estimate, not a promise or anything, but I just need something for discussion.
I don't think you need to work directly with the salesperson. That's something staff can.
Steve would do that, okay. But you do want some idea of, of cost?
Yes, we, we can figure out some estimate, you know, ballpark estimate of cost for what something like this would be. For us to prove that, we'd have to know how much it was gonna cost.
Right. And, you know, just an FYI, I've been talking with a lot of different seniors and once they, once they hear that idea, their eyes light up. One aspect of that that's really interesting, it's, it's been adopted in Europe and it's a very, it's a center for socialization. So it turns out that this brings a lot of seniors to the park, obviously very good for health purposes, but also it's a socialization time and it's, it's great. Thanks.
Chuck, when you're talking about a memorial spot, are you talking about what happened at Amptons? Correct. What does that have to do with this?
Um, I forgot who mentioned it, but the idea was brought up that it'd be good to do something here in the city of Capitola. So, you know, I was just talking around, trying to find.
Well, I already are doing it. All, all of our dedication, our benches and all our whales or our wharf, I mean, they're all over town now.
That's true, but I, the comment I thought was a wall, where if you saw that wall in the park, it was, you know, just extraordinary. So it was something on that scale.
You're talking about constructing a wall someplace?
You know, to me, that's probably art and cultural, but it's just that idea to pursue.
But we, we intentionally, when we did the, the sea wall tiles, we intentionally did not allow any memorials on there. There was a purpose for that.
Okay.
Yeah. And it was a purpose for it. And so I, I personally think that we've, we've already overdone. If you walk out on a wharf, we, we have a, a lifetime commitment, maybe two or three generations, to take care of all those things. You know, we have a huge undertaking someday to, to replace them. Every bench in town's been filled up. I mean, maybe our place has to add a few more benches, but we have so many in this town now. It's just, there's a point where.
Stephanie would like some in the Rispin and I'm, I'm okay with that. It's okay, you're okay.
Oh, no, but I have, that reminded me of something else. We, we got a question about mural, we have a policy on murals.
Oh, that came up.
And remember, we talked about that when that ugly one went up on Grady's Market?
We, as public art, the art commission brings every mural to this council. And the murals that are put on private property are brought to the planning commission to be appealed by the council if they wish. Every mural that's gone up has been approved by the planning commission.
Aren't we in mural fatigue right now too?
There is one, there is one person who lives across the street from the mural going up in the hotel who has mural fatigue.
There's another phrase. It's just not mural fatigue. It was noise, you know, art pollution or, or site pollution.
Beauty is in the eye of the beholder.
And what, I want to, ladies and gentlemen, we are the beholders. I want also to be clear. I, you know, as part of a development project, a mural is certainly approved by the planning commission, but we don't, the planning commission doesn't review when people paint their houses. So people have the right to paint their house and they can paint a mural on their house and it would not be subject to the city's review.
But it, the color is part of the, part of the review, isn't it?
No.
It used to be.
For a project, for a project.
For a house.
Or, yes, for a project.
If you have a project and you're smitty for a project, yes, the color is.
But you could paint your house.
Right, right.
And you could paint a giant turtle on the front of your house and the city couldn't say anything about it today.
Or a wave. You like that?
Or a wave.
Or a wave.
A wave could go on the side of the house.
Do we like that? Do we like that is the question?
Do we, do we want to be the?
Imagine if I painted flowers all over my house?
I'd love it.
That'd be cute.
You know, do we want to be the kind of city to be the color and art police? I don't think so.
No.
Let's just take a deep breath and live a nice life.
Hang on a second, a little break. A question from the treasurer.
Um, my question was about Rispin. Didn't we receive a grant for Rispin?
Yes.
But it wasn't enough.
Where's the hair short? Not enough.
So is that in this number?
It is.
And do we have a certain time that we have to utilize those funds before we lose the money?
Like next week?
End of June.
End of June.
So we have to come to, with plans or else we lose those dollars?
That's a lab rate.
No, we're rolling.
Who's asking?
Yeah, the grant money's actually going to the ADA improvements that started today out on the Rispin and then we're backfilling the park project with the ADA.
The fence is coming down, Dennis. The fence is coming.
How much was the grant?
Grant was $383,000.
On, on the red light enforcement, is that something we're reimbursed for since it's an outside agency involved that already?
Revenue neutral.
Yeah.
Wasn't caught.
I think it was $85,000.
It was actually a little bit higher than that. We've never reached that certain amount to where it is a revenue generator. There's been a lot of conversation about that. There's just not as many citations that, that get issued to where we do then generate revenue. Looking back at some of the records, I can't recall one year where we've actually received any revenue from that.
But does it cover our costs?
They, they covers overtime for some of the review process that we do.
Okay.
So that, that does help us cover those costs.
But it doesn't make any money for the city.
It stops people from running red lights.
And reduces accidents.
Oh, yeah. The accident reduction has just been phenomenal.
Should we do it in more places?
We could always have discussion about that down the road.
Oak Drive in Beverly? What do you think?
What's, what is interesting though is, is when you look at the 41st Avenue data, the accident data reduction extends beyond the intersection where we have the camera. The benefits seem to accrue to the neighboring intersections as well. So we may have to put up more stoplights if we wanted to put on more cameras.
Nothing this side of the river.
Right.
Go ahead, Chuck.
Just a, just a word of caution from your, you know, the fiscal conservative. I don't remember that our revenues grew 4% a year, year after year after year after year. That seems high to me. And I remember years when it was zero or less, or 1% or 2% or something like that. So I would say that the council, we need to be very cautious in the next few years and not expect that these revenues are gonna grow 4% and, and we're just gonna be able to run a city on, on with that.
I think that's what the city manager was trying to underscore.
I, I think totally agree.
I mean, absolutely. But, you know, we, this, this budget doesn't reflect that, doesn't reflect caution. It's, we're adding and adding, you know, that sort of thing. And it.
There's some one-time money that's available here that we're, that we're spending. A question, I'm not sure if I got this clear. I, this, the Rispin, you mentioned, mentioned you'd like to complete the Rispin and I shared that. When I look at this, does this show that we are short still? Or was there another page where we came in and funded the Rispin? Was that, just?
So as the CIP's presented tonight, we are funding the Rispin with no money going to the fountain though. We had had 70, $94,000 in there. That was to not make it a functioning fountain. That was to kind of.
The 293's in there. Sorry, I couldn't remember. I was just looking at the short.
293, but that does not include any.
And did we give any direction or can I just do that now to the art and cultural to possibly look into that?
Well, I was gonna tell Stephanie that going for the Mike Arnon Fountain Plan would be ill-advised at this point because we can do that as an art project and pay for it with the art fund.
I just didn't want the public to have to wait a year for it, but.
They can wait. They'll probably wait a year or two. It'll be nice.
It's gonna be worth the wait.
Okay.
Jamie, can, can the city actively, um, search for a donor? Can it be a program where we actually go out and let, and advertise for a donor, such as for a fountain?
Oh, for the Rispin Fountain?
Yeah. Can we do that? Can we, can we do that as a city?
We can't. I mean, we did that, you'll recall, for the, um, McGregor Park. We actively sought donors and got the Monti Foundation and the other contributors to that project. If we thought that the fountain was something that we were interested in getting a donation, if we were interested in giving naming rights to it, things like that. The art and cultural commission may want to own the project in its entirety, um, but I'm happy to look into it if the council would like me to.
I'd like it.
I don't, I, I'm not really willing to sell the name. I, I would rather have the art and cultural commission come back to us for some kind of a proposal for the fountain. I'm willing to wait for that and, and.
You don't, you don't have to give away the name.
I understand.
It'll be fabulous.
I have a lot of confidence in that commission.
It's emerging. Sounds too political.
And I like their assets.
Yes. Please, since you're here, how's the stop sign scenario at 41st and Claire's with the change?
I haven't heard anything negative. So that's a good thing.
Okay. Just wanted to know. Thank you.
No, accidents haven't increased at all. And the community members that I did talk to when we were trying to resolve that issue, they were very pleased with the engagement and they've been positive about it.
Okay. That's great.
Steve, where's, what's the status on the roundabout and process?
So the roundabout, we're, um, we actually met with PG&E. The first thing we, part of the roundabout these happen is trying to get the utilities undergrounded. So I actually met earlier this week with a PG&E representative in charge of that. We are going to initiate trying to, the way the undergrounding projects work is they won't work on it until we have enough PG&E credits to it. So we're gonna redefine the project so that we have enough credits and they will initiate work. The PG&E representative is gonna email me something hopefully in the next couple of weeks so we can get that problem room. Has a two to three-year commitment from PG&E before we'll be done with the utility. So we'll be dovetailing that with the, with the roundabout. Cause we, we can't under, we can't do the roundabout until the utilities are undergrounded.
So have we, have we done the engineering on that project or we just done a, a plan line?
We've just done a plan line at this point.
And, and when, as far as presenting that to public, when would that, would you think that would be done?
Um, we can probably do that in the next couple of months, yeah. The summer would be a good time.
Great. Thank you.
Don't sit down, chief. I apologize. I, Steve, you also, just, but for both of you, just my one question I was concerned about is, I've concerned about Reposa and 41st Avenue and possibly installing some of those flashing yellow lights. And my two questions are, one to you, chief, do you see that as a, as a, as an area where we have a problem? And then my other question to Steve is, how much would it cost to put that in? So I'll let you answer first.
I've looked at the accident data and it's really not that high. In fact, some of In fact, some of the accidents that have occurred have been a little further down, coming out of the New Leaf Market.